Welcome to this meeting of the Full Council of Northumberland County Council. As you will all be aware, we are live streamed. Do we have the microphone? People, can I make contact? Got you, one, two, great. Please do use the microphones because it is to be heard by people who do watch. So we'll come to that and just make progress. Apologies for absence. From here, I have Councillors Wendy Paterson, Councillor Scott Dickinson, Councillor Barry Flux, Councillor Gordon Castle and Councillor Stephen Bridget. Any more from the floor? Yes?
Councillor Unheppel, Chair.
Unheppel, any more?
Councillor Barry Flux.
I've said Barry. No more? Okay. Minutes of the previous meeting held on the 2nd of May. These are for accuracy on this one. Any questions of accuracy on the minutes of the meeting of the 2nd of May? Nobody has shown any hands. Disclosure of members' interests. Anybody want to disclose any interests that aren't currently listed? Councillor Shaw?
Turn out the issue, declare my interest in the outcome of consultation on education in the west of Northumberland and make a passage as governor of to the schools. Do I need to re-declare that again?
Or you've just done it. Any more? I can't see any more, let's move on. Announcements by myself. A number of people have been honoured in the Queen's birthday honours and letters will be sent out to those people from the county council. The other two things I've got. Councillor Homer, you want to push your Northumberland event?
First of all, I was delighted to be at Cramlington Learning Village last Thursday to see over 1,800 children participating in the Northumberland School Games. It was a fantastic event on an extremely hot day and just for today, I just wanted to record my thanks to the event organising committee and of course, all of the young people from across the county that took part in those games. The reminder that I've got is it is the launch of Great Northumberland on Saturday, which is the council's arts and culture event and exhibition programme which complements the Great Exhibition of the North. It will take place in Hexham from 1 till 5 in the Seal and Abbey grounds. Everybody's welcome, so I do hope I'll see some of you there. Thank you.
Okay. I have nothing further on announcements. Correspondence. For Grant, I've got you, the Northern Farmer this time, and I'll make reference to page four where we have the chairman of the National Park at Woolah School's open day. So that's for you, Grant. It's an up-to-date issue. Nothing else on correspondence, so let's move straight on to questions. Can't find them. The first question is councillor Robinson to councillor Riddle. The microphone?
I've been getting a lot of contact from constituents about their housing needs.
Councillor Robinson, can you just lift it?
I know it's not really something where the council have much control over because the vast majority of these properties in question in my ward belong to a separate social landlord. But the public perception is that they are still council houses. I believe these social landlords still carry a social responsibility, but sometimes it's not the easiest thing getting them to accept that fact. After many attempts to try and get the right person to deal with my issues and in a lot of cases, not really getting past the front desk, my question is, can we not have someone within our housing department who can be a liaison point for all members in their initial interactions with social landlords? They should hold direct contact details with the people who are tasked to oversee these problems within their respective organisations. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Riddle?
Thank you councillor Robinson. I've got some sympathy with your question, certainly in the past when it was ISOs in the west, it was difficult getting past the front door, but I think things have definitely improved dramatically with Carbon in that area now. Anyway, when housing is owned and managed by a housing association or other third-party organisation, the responsibility for the management and investigation of concerns rests with that organisation. In cases where elected members receive complaints, they should initially be taken up with the housing association as the council has no statutory powers to intervene. To assist, the head of Housing and Public Protection will seek to collate and distribute to all councils a list of key contacts for each of the main housing providers operating within Northumberland. In circumstances where an elected member is unable to obtain a satisfactory response from a housing association, they may escalate their inquiry to the head of Housing and Public Protection, Phil Sodick West, via Mrs Jo Gavin, his PA. An arrangements will be made to have the matter further investigated. I can say that recently, in the west area, we councillors had a, at the invitation of Carbon Homes, had a very good tour around some of their properties and, you know, over there, we actually have a list of who to get in touch with and I think this is, this would be good if we had it throughout the rest of the county.
Supplementary? Happy with that? Okay, question two, again councillor Robinson to councillor Riddle.
During a recent strategic planning meeting, we heard the application for the new school which is to be built just over there. Every member was supportive and just about as passionate as the head teacher obviously was. My only concern was the traffic issue, specifically the lack of a drive-in, drop-off and safety and drive-out again facility. One which in my view, should keep traffic flowing on the main roads and take out any need for parents to stop on the main roads to decant their children. I have exactly those sort of problems in and around my ward and I bet most members do. But here we are, building a new school from scratch and in that context, I think a bit more thought should have been applied to alleviate these problems. I was initially informed this was the case and this had been factored in. On later investigation, I found this wasn't the case and the council actually has a policy forbidding them. So we aren't seen to be condoning parents taking their children to school in private vehicles. The reality is, many parents do take their children to school in their own cars and that's causing havoc in and around our schools at start and finish times. My position is that instead of raging some sort of subliminal war where we don't do something in case it looks like we're condoning it, shouldn't we be practically managing the issue in real time, certainly as far as new builds are concerned? My question is, can we revisit the policy currently in place which forbids us at a planning stage from looking at practical and reasonable solutions to this problem?
Councillor Riddle?
Thank you. As you rightly state, the issues relating to the use of private vehicles on the school run and the parking of vehicles in the vicinity of schools is acknowledged and recognised at a local and national level. In local terms, the matter is referred to within the county council's Sustainable Modes of Travel strategy, which states pupil parking and drop-off, pick-up areas should not be provided as this encourages car usage. The National Planning Policy Framework states that transport systems need to be balanced in favour of sustainable transport modes whilst recognising that solutions will vary from urban to rural areas. Notwithstanding the above, the proposed design for the Mortwith First School on the Lone Stain site does include some space for drop-off and pick-up of children within the premises. The Sustainable Modes of Travel strategy has not therefore precluded the provision of facilities, but it remains the view of officers that careful consideration of the extent of spaces for this purpose should be undertaken in consultation with Children's Services representatives as part of a pre-designed philosophy and concept and overriding concern being of course, for the safety of our young people. The submitted framework travel plan for the new first school in Mortwith contains reference to drop-off spaces. It is explained that these are intended to be available for those who have no choice but to drive to the site, thereby increasing the sustainable credentials of the school and seeking to minimise incrementation and unnecessary use of private vehicles. I do understand that this is difficult and, you know, it's hard to police the fact that you're just like people that really need to drive there to use them.
Supplementary?
As I promised the Strategic Planning Committee, I've had another look at that application. There isn't a drop-off point, there's a car park. That's quite different to what I was proposing.
And I'm being advised you have to have a supplementary question, not a...
Well, my question still stands. Why can't we look at the policy?
I think the comments are noted. We all have schools with similar situations.
Well, the answer is, we can of course, look at the policy councillor Robinson, but we have got to look at it in the context of the National Planning Framework as well and we can't do things that are in direct conflict.
Okay, question three, from county councillor Pittcock to councillor Daly.
Thank you. I must apologise Chair, I've, there's a mistake in the first sentence, it's got symbolic nature. It should actually be shambolic nature. It could be symbolic however, because everything that this group of people are doing is shambolic. Given the shambolic nature of the West of Northumberland education consultation and the public nature of the humiliating clindown, is it not time for councillor Daly to give way to someone more competent to deal with these issues which have such huge effects on children and families, but also on the fragile rural economy of these communities?
Councillor Daly?
Thank you. I'm conscious Chair that councillor Pittcock will have prepared a 20-minute speech for us, but on his first outing as the shadow education spokesman, he can't even get the question right. The answer is no.
Supplementary?
Chair, councillor Daly received an invitation from a family in the extreme west of the county to undertake the journey their 11-year-old will have to make if you shut Bellingham School. They wanted you councillor Daly, to experience in some small way, the extra 3,360 miles in three years that that 11-year-old, 12-year-old will have to travel. An extra 84 hours or three and a half days in a bus on some of the most treacherous roads in England. A road which has an accident nearly every three weeks, 75 accidents in the past three years. This used to be called cruelty to children. Why didn't councillor Daly take up that invitation as I did?
Thank you Chair. I'm very conscious that, and councillor Pittcock will no doubt be aware of this, that on Thursday of this week, we have a scrutiny committee and that scrutiny committee will look at the results of the consultation for education in the west. So it's very important that none of us are seen to prejudice the outcome of what scrutiny may or may not decide to do. And then on the 10th of July, and I'm very conscious that councillor Pittcock will not be able to join us on the 10th of July, and I wish you very well for what you're about to embark on on that day, but cabinet will make a decision. So, let me just run through a couple of things and this Conservative-run council is presiding over one of the biggest investments in our school infrastructure in this council's history. Just in our medium-term financial plan for the next few years, we've got over £50 million allocated and I will not apologise for the fact that we are one of the only local authorities in England still investing in our schools and in our young people. And I'm actually really proud that this Conservative administration actually listens to people. Now, I just want to take you on a little journey back to 2014, when thousands of people protested against the imposition of a £600 teenage tax, a tax on young people being educated after the age of 16. Thousands of people protested. And what did the Labour Group do? They ignored them and imposed it and I am delighted that we actually removed that. On the 2nd of May, the current, the current leader of the Labour Group said that removing the teenage tax was great for rich people in the countryside who can afford to drive their kids. They talk about wanting to protect fragile rural communities, but when they were in power, they hammered them. And also remember the fact that the questioner today, on the 7th of June 2013, one of the first things he did in power as Chair of Family and Children's Community at 10 o'clock in the morning in Hexham, and being precise, was to move and approve and recommend the closure of Allendale Middle School. And perhaps Labour need to wake up and realise that this Conservative council, when it consults, actually listens. So during our big conversation with the community in the west, we engaged with lots of families, hundreds of families. I'm delighted that our cabinet members all went out in Hexham, in Hayden Bridge, in our communities, talking to local people, including when we had a gathering out here, we brought the Stars people in and they sat with me, which is more than what happened when you were in power. So what have we done? We've saved Hayden Bridge and we've got rid of Bright Tribe and in actual fact, let me...
Keep fighting.
In an actual fact, I'm answering the question Chair, because this is really important. Because he talks about rural communities, so let me talk about rural communities. When he was Chair of FAX, he shut a middle school in a rural area and here we are, 13th of December 2016, when Labour were in power, a letter to Justine Greening, the then Minister of State for Education, and I quote, "We concluded that letter by stating that in light of the unresolved issues referred to in the original letter, which was about Bright Tribe and Hayden Bridge, that we have no alternative but to consider a solution which will involve the closure of Hayden Bridge High School, black and white." Don't lecture to me about rural communities. This administration is supporting them through our consultation, we have listened to our communities and we will continue to listen to them through a resilience programme, over £50 million invested into our schools and a resilience programme which will work and take the best practice from some of our small schools. And I'm proud of the ambition we have for the west and for the whole of the county. And can I just say on the subject of resignation, because I know you want that, I know you want the answer to the question, so I'm going to give it to you. Subject of resignation, unfortunately, unfortunately, that opportunity was lost four weeks ago when the Labour Group bottled it, when they had the chance to remove their current Labour leadership. So all I'd say to you is, that's what I call shambolic.
Right, question, question four, councillor Grimshaw to councillor Oliver.
Thank you, I'm going to get a quick reply please, I don't want any more lectures, just a quick answer please, if you don't mind. Could I ask what assessment has the portfolio holder for corporate services made of pressures on the two-year council budget since it was set? Please.
Thank you very much councillor Grimshaw. So when this administration was elected in May 2017, there was a lot of significant pressure on the council's revenue budget, which hadn't been addressed by the previous administration. I think it was termed at the time, a large black hole. We then set about addressing that and we had a series of meetings, the leader and I meeting with the directors and portfolio holders in each area of the council's business. And from that, we put together a budget which was passed by this council in February of this year. That budget, 24.1 million pounds was committed to the medium-term financial plan to cover the recurrent pressures that had been ignored by the previous administration. We also incorporated nearly 1.8 million to cover the non-recurrent pressures, which we'd been made aware of at the time. There continues to be significant pressure on services. Demand for adults and children's social care is increasing in this county, we've got an ageing population in this county and we're all aware of the pressures on the highway budgets following the severe weather earlier this year, which occurred after the council had set its budget and the state of the roads that we inherited from the previous administration. So we're doing what we can to alleviate the pressure on the budget, but we have a limited amount of money, we have a lot of debt, a lot of costs servicing that debt and we've had to make some tough choices and will continue to have to do so. So with this in mind, we meet regularly, portfolio holders meet with their senior officers to discuss their budgets, the leader and I have meetings with the Section 151 officer and we're constantly monitoring it.
Supplementary?
Thank you, thank you Chair. Well, I would just like to ask councillor Oliver if he could actually be more specific as to exactly what areas the black hole was under the previous administration, because I can assure you, there was no black holes and I don't know where you've made this up from, but thank you for your comments and totally, totally disagree with them. Thank you councillor Oliver.
Okay, well, I'm quite happy to send you a copy of the slide. I think you were at the presentation at one of the local area councils that Peter and I attended and we set out in great detail, the detail of that black hole and I'll send you a copy of that slide.
Well, actually...
Hang on. You've had your two.
No, I haven't. I've got, I've got, I've got one more. I've got the next one.
Yeah, but that's the next question. Okay, let's do the next question.
Thank you Chair. What assessment has the portfolio holder for corporate services made of pressures on capital funding since the budget was set?
Well, again, the truth is that we inherited a capital programme that would have taken us from three-quarters of a billion pounds in debt to one and a half billion pounds in debt and would have cost the council another 20 million pounds a year in debt servicing charges. So we've had to look in detail at that programme. So we've set a new budget, which again, was approved by council in February and that capital programme is set now. Obviously, things arise that we can't anticipate and we have to react accordingly, but we're constantly monitoring it. And the one thing I can promise you is, we're setting a really high bar in terms of, in terms of capital expenditure and we're looking at things and just sort of following a really, really robust process assessing business cases before we invest ratepayers' money and saddle the council with more debt. And the other thing we're doing is we're making sure that the capital expenditure is spread right across the county rather than in just particular areas.
Supplementary?
Thank you. The Pontieland School and Leisure Project started under the last Labour administration was an example of the last administration's commitment to invest right across Northumberland. However, in its funding package, significant capital resources were derived from Section 106 agreements from housing schemes surrounding Pontieland. Given the new administration's apparent determination to stop any development in Pontieland, can the portfolio holder confirm that the shortfall in finances for this scheme will be made up from the general funding and the taxpayers across the county, many of whom have children attending schools? In, as a desperate state, a refurbishment will be forced to pick up the bill?
Well, first of all, I would say that we are committed to the schools and leisure development in Pontieland and we're very grateful to the previous administration for starting that process. It was much needed, long overdue, as is some of the other investments that we have to make in other parts of the county. So my colleagues in Berwick, my colleagues in Prado, my colleagues in Hexham are all grateful for the work that's being done to address right across the county, as well as significant investments in Ashington, in Blythe, in Cramlington and in Bedlington. So we are trying to invest across the county. In terms of receipts of Section 106, it would be imprudent and it wasn't budgeted for in the previous budgets, but you can't budget for Section 106 receipts until the actual planning permission is granted. So there was no revenue budgeted from those Section 106 agreements and so nothing has changed and we've put the investment into the Pontieland schools into our budget and that's been approved by full council.
Question six, councillor Dunworth to councillor Jones.
Thank you. Councillor Jones, the Publics Account Committee review of adult social care workforce in England found underfunded services with staff experiencing low pay and esteem. Four-fifths of local authorities are paying below the sector's benchmark cost for commissioning home care and Brexit may have a major impact on the workforce, with workers not valued in the same way as those employed by the NHS, providers are struggling to fill posts. Are you aware of any staff surveys that have been overtaken with home and residential care workers in Northumberland and if so, what were the results?
Thank you councillor Dunworth. I mean, you will be aware that this council is not one of those that pays commissioners' home care below the sector's benchmark, I think you will be aware of that. Staff that are employed in home care or in residential settings that are employed by the council and by Northumbria Healthcare Trust are subject to an annual employee survey. In each year, there have been positive results across a number of questions in relation to satisfaction. The independent sector who employ home care and care home workers use various tools for staff feedback and the council, who are a commissioner of these services, receives information as part of a quality monitoring of services. These services are regulated by the Quality Care Commission, as you're aware, and as part of their annual inspection, they survey or interview staff. From those inspections, we know Northumberland has improved CQC ratings. However, we are aware that our commissioned home care services providers do report difficulties in staff recruitment, particularly in the more rural areas. And the reasons given vary, includes competition from other sectors such as retail and tourism and also includes the sparse population in our rural areas. We pay higher rates in those rural areas and work with providers on their recruitment processes. As you know, last year, we increased our rates to the home market in the rural areas and extended the area to which we pay those higher rates. Those increases that we made last year were actually the first real increases that have been made to that sector for quite some time, certainly in the last administration. Our providers' response has been to improve staffing levels and address some of the broader issues that cover more than salary and these include value-based recruitment so that we appoint the right people who, in the first place, who will stay in the sector and improve their support through working. We will be reviewing again our home care contract very shortly for the next three years.
Supplementary?
Yeah, thank you councillor Jones. I am aware of, obviously, the history behind it, but I also know there was a problem with settling that contract. Are we still on a temporary contract with the providers until next year? Has that been agreed for this?
The contracts were all agreed.
Okay, next question, it was you councillor Dunworth?
Yeah, my second question relates to the same report and that is, is there a workforce strategy for care workers in Northumberland?
Yeah, is that better? Yeah, right, we've recently refreshed the social care workforce strategy, which leads to the regional and national workforce strategy. The principal social work of the council and the lead for social work development actively update that strategy and implement plans to support it. In addition, the council are currently out to consultation on our adult social care market mission statement, which covers services delivered by our independent sector and that in itself also addresses the workforce issue.
Supplementary?
Yeah, just a final supplementary. Have we noticed or are we aware of any impact of the plan to leave your, on the workforce in Northumberland? No, we are aware that there could be an impact, but it's less likely than other parts of the country that we will have an impact, but that doesn't mean we won't be monitoring it.
Okay.
Can I just thank councillor Jones for the professional way in which she's answered my questions today? Thank you.
Councillor Dale?
Thank you very much. Question seven, sorry, question eight. At the full council meeting on 3rd of January 2018, it was agreed to set up a working group to discuss the use of social media. Please could you let full council know if a meeting of the working group has taken place?
This comes under councillor Oliver's portfolio, so I'll ask him to respond.
Thank you. I actually don't remember that discussion, but, and I'm not sure whether it was actually that we would set up a working group or whether we would consider setting up a working group. Social media is becoming an increasingly important part of the council's communication strategy and it's really important for a number of reasons. And it's really important for a number of reasons. I think first of all, it allows us to have more direct, more specific and better communication with residents. So we've set up Facebook pages that are specific to each area. And we're also, as you know, we've developed a new website which also allows residents to be able to sort of hone down the news in their area. So we're trying to improve direct communication with residents. We're also trying to encourage direct participation in the democratic process. And I think social media allows us to do that too. And then thirdly, we're looking at greater accountability for members. So the more that our residents know about what we're doing, the more they can hold us to account. And I personally think that's, those three things are a really good idea. We do have a social media policy. And that can be shared with all councillors, I think it has been in the past. And it's called Guidance on the Use of Social Media by Members. So our view is that we actually don't need a working group to address social media. I think we've got everything under control. And we have a social networking policy also for all council employees, which was updated in May 2018, in line with the introduction of the General Data Protection Regulations. And the communications team are very willing to run some training courses if members feel they would benefit from that. Perhaps we could do something through the local area councils.
Okay, supplementary.
Yes, thank you. First of all, can I just say, first of all, I would like you to respond to my question. The motion was put on the 3rd of January 2018. It was a motion put by councillor Davy and it was seconded by your leader, who said, "The motion is being non-political in the best interest of the council as a whole. Whilst there was a guidance note for members on the use of social media, this needed a refresh and he welcomed the idea of a cross-party working group to look at the whole issue." Why I have brought this up is, A, it is now six months and from what I gather, there has been no working group held at all. In that meantime, in the meantime, there have been quite a lot of what I call nasty, provocative, illegal copyright productions and other things on Facebook, which is, has been, caused a lot of harm to members of the public and to councillors. And I think it's only right that if your leader has seconded something, that you could actually carry it forward. So what I would like you to do is, when you actually have this working group, which was agreed by council, that you actually ask a lot of people to come along, especially those who've actually been harmed by information that has been put on Facebook.
Next one, councillor.
Sorry, no, if I could just quickly respond, yes, we will, we will, I apologise. We, I wasn't aware that it had actually been a council motion, I thought it had been a suggestion. So please accept my apologies for that. We will, if that's been agreed by council, we will set up a working group. But I make no apology for the, for the work that we've been doing in the last six months. We've dramatically improved the council's website. We've dramatically improved the ability for our residents to communicate with the council. And we've dramatically improved the information being passed on to residents. So I make no apologies for that. The point about harm is, I think if any, anything on the council website or any of the council's social media channels is causing any member harm, then they only need to raise that with the head of communications or with myself as the portfolio member and we'll investigate it. What I cannot do is police the whole of the internet. We cannot police the whole of Facebook. We cannot police the whole of social media. So what appears there is outside of our control and it would be unrealistic to expect us to be able to deal with that.
Okay, question nine, councillor Dale to councillor Riddle.
Question nine. As county councillors, we are instructed to use the county council emergency telephone number 0345 600 6400. How many county councillors have used this number over the last year?
Thank you councillor Dale. The 0345 600 6400 number is the general NCC out of hours contact number. Sorry, you answered the right question councillor Dale. Yes, it is. Question.
Question nine.
Yes, okay, sorry, I was just checking, I wasn't actually expecting to answer this one to you. Right, although it's written here, I thought it was going to be, going to be Nick who was going to be responding on this because it's a corporate issue.
Sorry, councillor Oliver.
Yeah, the question's been asked to councillor Riddle, but it was felt that the most appropriate answer would, would come from me because I, I'm the portfolio holder that includes customer service. So, so the 0345 600 6400 number is the general NCC out of hours contact number and it's not an emergency telephone number. If there's any requirement for an elected member to report an emergency, we would also, we would always advise them to call 999. Elected members have previously been provided with a direct admin number for the Northumberland Fire and Rescue Service Fire Control to allow them to report water constituency matter concerns without navigating the recorded preference system. And we'd encourage them to use that number. Regarding the number of times that elected members have called the 0345 number, I'm afraid we just can't give you an answer to that. The only way we could accurately check it would be to, to get all telephone numbers that all councillors could possibly use and then monitor them. And to be honest, I think that would be a waste of council resources. We each know how many times we've called that number. And if we have any issues, we can raise them in the, in the normal way. Thank you.
Supplementary.
Yeah, just, can I clarify, and I think we need to clarify this position is, on the letterhead I have of one particular department, it says county council emergency telephone number. I'm not going to ask you anymore. Would you please go back and check that all the letterheads or the list of county numbers at the bottom read accordingly as they should do?
Yes, we'll certainly do that and it would be really helpful if you could provide us with a copy of that letterhead to give us a head start. Thank you.
Right, let's get on with the meeting. Item seven, to receive the minutes of cabinet meetings held on the 8th of May and the 14th of June. Is that, yes?
Chair, if I could refer members, please, to page 29. And it's the bottom of page 29 and it's the section headed "Resolved unanimously that" and it's section A. This needs to be approved by full council because it's an increase of 1.54 million pounds, which will be invested into improving, sustaining and saving Hayden Bridge High School. And because it doesn't fall into the medium-term financial plan, we need full council approval to do that.
Okay, are we happy to agree that? Agreed? And the other one is minute 13 on the 14th of June relating to the new capital proposals considered. Yes?
Yes, thank you Chair, I'm quite happy to propose these clarifications to the capital programme. We are going to invest further into Anick Junior's 3G football pitch, a healthy People's Capital Fund, which should have a county-wide implication to improving the lives of young people. And finally, we're getting a start on our car parking programme. And we've been talking to communities and town councils right across the county. Some of the changes we're going to bring in are in terms of process and regulation, but we really hope they will make a difference and make it better for everyone who lives in this county. Thank you.
Can we agree that? Councillor Pidcock.
I'd just like to ask a question. I promise it's not vexatious. Am I, am I given to, oh, sorry. Am I given to, thank you. Am I given to understand that we've just agreed to close Bellinger Middle School?
No.
Right, okay, I mean, it's a genuine question. Because I see at the bottom here on page 30, it was resolved unanimously that close Bellinger Middle School with effect from the 31st of August.
2019.
Yeah.
The process will.
Chair, can I come in? Appreciate the fact, I was very clear on this. We were only then, only just now on that vote, focused on page 29, section A. If you turn the page, they are totally different matters. It is only on the approval of the 1.54 million to be invested into teaching and learning and the preservation of Hayden Bridge High. It does not relate to Bellinger Middle at all. That's a decision which will go before scrutiny on Thursday morning and then will eventually come to full cabinet on Tuesday of next week, when cabinet will make a decision based in light of whatever scrutiny can come up with and indeed the 73 representations we have, has already about Bellinger Middle.
It's not that we don't trust you.
Okay. See no further hands, item eight. To receive the minutes of the following committees. One, corporate services and economic growth. Who's that, councillor Ball?
Thank you Chair, I'd like to move the minutes of the Corporate Services and Economic Growth Overview and Scrutiny Committee, pages 45 to 48. Thank you.
Any questions? Can't see any. Let's go to the next one. Two, Family and Children's Services Overview and Scrutiny, pages 49 to 60.
Chair, I'd like to move the minutes of the Family and Children's Services Overview and Scrutiny Committee, pages 49 to 60.
Councillor Dale.
Thank you very much. Can I just refer you to 6.2 on page 58? Every year, I give a statement to my parish councils. And in that, I include the safeguarding activity trends report. And a lot of people in my area are very grateful to be kept informed of the issues that the county council has to handle across the whole of the council. The trends report is quite important because it actually shows us the hardship that a lot of our children are having, especially in the deprived areas. And the reports from the discussion from the Overview and Scrutiny Committee have asked for one thing, which is the asking for benchmarking across comparable unitary authorities. Can I just ask you to look at past work that this council, this council, this committee have done on safeguarding and children? In the past, we've had working groups, which have dealt with the Marbitt Report and other reports, whereby it's generally acknowledged that unless you invest in the poorer areas, you're going to have more and more issues about safeguarding of children. And it's something that no, no one in any of my wards likes. And each year, they keep on saying to me, "How can this be happening?" So can I ask the committee to go back? You don't have to be partisan because there are a lot of people who would be left from the last council who would be able to give you advice. Instead of going backwards, grab that advice and move forward. Because it is actually important to us that we all look after those children who are in need. Because if we don't do that now, they won't have a very good future.
Chair, can I come in?
Yeah, yeah.
Onto that.
Go on to that firstly.
Sorry, did you?
With regards to your bit about benchmarking, we did actually discuss that. And we believe the, the way that this is benchmarked is different this year to what it has been in previous years, making it therefore difficult to do what you have to do. We have asked the officers to do their best to come back however next time and show us that data because it is something the committee were very interested to know about.
Councillor Dale.
Yeah, thank you Chair. The other thing as well to add to this report and I take on board some of the comments that councillor Dale's made, we should always look at the good practice that's been done irrespective of what the politics are. However, what I would also say as well is that within this administration, what we have developed is the Social Work Academy, which is now in its second year and I've had the pleasure of meeting the first year children's social workers, who were an amazing bunch of people, who do an amazing job in many of our communities across Northumberland. And I've had the pleasure of meeting the second year cohort of those social workers as well. And the reason that we've done that is to end the cycle of constant, constant agency workers, which does not give that alignment to families and to their issues because they constantly end up with different people. What we're doing in this administration is focusing like a laser beam on our issues that need to be addressed in some of our poorer communities and indeed the communities across the whole of Northumberland. But the Chair of Scrutiny is here and I'm sure he will take on board many of the comments that you've raised there.
Okay councillor Dale, you come back? Now I'll have councillor Davy.
Can I come back because I just feel very strongly about this? It's actually looking at the causes, not benchmarking of how good we are or anything. It's about actually looking at the causes. If you go into Moreport Hospital and you see children, parents who've got young babies and you ask them why, ask the paediatrician why they're there, basically it's because it's poverty. So what we need to do is to actually invest in our poorer areas because that's the only way that we're going to make lives better for people.
Councillor Davy.
Yes Chair.
All right.
I wasn't going to, I wasn't going to raise this as an issue, but I'm pleased it's come about this way because hearing that we're going to pat ourselves on the back because we're having more social workers, which is a good thing, not against it. And hearing that we're going to have a benchmarking scheme, not against that. It does not target the real issues. The real issues are your manifesto. It's behind, your manifesto is behind many of the real issues. And your government is behind many of the other real issues. Your manifesto clearly states that you're not going to invest. And the leaf that you put out at the time of the election, you're not going to invest in Ashington or Blyth. The government hasn't reduced universal credit. So we have an increase in food banks and a massive rate in time.
The question I need is on the report. What I need is on the report.
In poverty cases on children, for children in Blyth and Ashington. And councillor Dale's correct, you need to get a finger out and actually get something positively done. Thank you Chair.
Can we stick to what is on the reports, please?
Chair, can I just come in? A bit, pulling fingers out, we've pulled our finger out. We have a poverty lead that we employ in this council to precisely work in those communities because those communities are our communities as well.
Right. Councillor Pidcock.
It's on the same, on the same issue. Thank you. The Joint Consultative Committee asked for an impact assessment on the reduction of teaching assistance in our school and the effects that this was having on shoplifting, truancy and so on and so on. The Joint Consultative Committee, the trade unions, asked this council to do an impact assessment on what was happening to our children along the lines of councillor Dale.
All right, okay. Next meeting, the community in place overview and scrutiny. Councillor Reed. It's coming from there.
Oh, there we are. I'd like to move the minutes of the community in place overview and scrutiny committee, 8th of June, pages 61 to 66.
Anybody, any question or comment? Can't see it, we'll take them. Item four, health and wellbeing overview and scrutiny, pages 67 to 74. Councillor Watson.
Thank you, I'd like to move the minutes of the Health and Wellbeing OSC, pages 67 to 74, as you have in front of you.
Councillor Hill.
Thank you Chair, it's just the point on page 70, and this is a point about the accuracy of the minutes. This is on the item on engagement about a possible integrated hospital and leisure development for Berwick. I was there presenting feedback from, from the community in the public meeting that was held. And in about the middle of the page, a paragraph that begins councillor Hill acknowledged, it said, that I said that some communities were not in favour of a joint facility. What I said was that the feedback from the public meeting and elsewhere would indicate that the community was not sold on the idea of a joint leisure hospital. And it is, I think that was a sort of key point, so with the chair's permission, could that be amended? It's just what I, what I presented. Well, it said here that some communities were not in favour of a joint venture. We're talking about the community of Berwick and what I said, what I presented in the feedback was that at a public meeting and elsewhere, it was quite clear that the feedback was that the community were not sold, the community as a whole, not separate communities. communities.
Okay.
Thank you.
Health and wellbeing board, pages 75 to 82, just by me. Anybody? Can't see anybody. Audit committee, councillor Hill.
Thank you chair, happy to move the minutes of the audit committee, held on, which you'll see in page 83 to 90, which was held on the 23rd of May. As you will see, there was an item of urgent business, which was arch, or shall we say, the late arch, which, no, would be heartbreaking for many in this, in this room, and I'm happy to move those minutes.
Right, anything on the minutes of audit? Can't see anybody, prove them. Okay, devolution working group. Councillor Jackson.
Yeah, I might be to propose the minutes, chair, and they're quite comprehensive, and I will say that we're looking for a date for the next meeting very urgently indeed, so there'll be a note to centre around members within the next few days. Thank you.
Anybody, anything on that? Councillor Robinson.
Chair, just about on the rule line, page 93.
Can you stand up just a little?
It has been misinterpreted, that 20 million would be received every year for 30 years. I thought that was 30 million for five years. It was sold as a 600 million pound deal, originally.
Yeah, no, it is, it's 20 million for 30 years.
It's not. That's 600.
Councillor Reed.
Thank you chair, I'm not going to the 20 million quid lot, because, anyway, I take it, this meeting that you called is about, Brokenshire is about to sign the piece of paper, that my question was, it was promised that in July, the thing would be launched and there'd be an interim mayor and the election would be next year, and I just wondered how close to that schedule we're on.
Yeah, but there has been a slight delay about the arrangements of separating from the north and south of Tyne authorities, but we're still on track. The current target date for orders to be laid before parliament is 24th of July, and the new authority will start very soon after that. But the reason for an update is there's been quite a lot of detailed work going on behind the scenes, and we just want to appraise all political groups across the council about the latest position and get some feedback from you all. Thank you.
Okay, no one further, we have delegated decisions, are we happy with those? Happy. Right, here we come to item 10, motions. Now, this is where it gets a little bit different, as in, I have to pass Schedule 12A of exclusion of the press and public while we as councillors take some legal advice. Can that motion be put? I'm told it'll not take very long.
Yeah, we will fully accept that.
So can you propose that?
Seconded.
Seconded. So members of the public and press, I'm asking you to leave the room, you can either go that way or into the restaurant. Yes, and I also ask for the...